The Board of Trustees, Pasadena Area Community College, please come to order. We all call please.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Wa.
Here.
Dr. Mann.
Present.
Dr. Fellow.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Dr. Salvage.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Baughn.
Well, it's been a long time since we had a full slate of trustees. Welcome back, Dr. Fellow. So let's see what's on the agenda for tonight. Ms. Cooper?
Thank you, President Brown. On closed session agenda tonight, we have collective bargaining, PCCFA, lead negotiator, Dr. Miller, Government Code Section 5495-7.6. Collective bargaining with PCCCT, CSCA, and POA, lead negotiator myself, same Government Code Section. Negotiation with unrepresented employees, management, association, and confidential s, lead negotiator, Dr. Miller, same Government Code Section. And lastly, public employee appointments, dean instructional support, dean library and distance education, and associate dean distance education, Government Code Section 5495-7.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the board and these agenda items? Seeing there's none, we will go to closed session. We're back from closed session. And I would like, Ms. Cooper, do we have any reportable items?
There is no reportable action in closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. At this time, I would like to ask trustee Fellow to lead us in a page of allegiance.
He stands. In so long, I don't know how to read your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to our Board of Trustees meeting for July the 15th. And today, we have a new superintendent president to my left, and we want to welcome him. So as we move on, we have some introductions. I have an introduction. Do we want to do Jeff first, or where is he?
Right there.
Right there.
We have one of our very favorite ex-trustee for PCC that has some introductions. Would you like to come to the podium?
Well, I actually had submitted a public comment card to speak on a non-agenda item.
It's okay.
But my name is Jeffrey Baum, and I'm president of the Board of Governors for the California Community College System. And I served for 12 years alongside these distinguished individuals on our Board of Trustees. And I'm here to share greetings, not only to celebrate and welcome our new president and superintendent, together with my colleagues on the Board of Governors and Chancellor Rice-Harris, who I spoke to today, but to let the district know that the state really looks to PCC for leadership. And that one recognition of that is in the role that Vice President Wa and Len O'Wiggins are playing on the statewide task force on workforce education. And PCC provides a model of excellence that is recognized up and down the state. And whatever we can do to support our new president and the institution, we are eager to do that. And I'm hoping to see you all in Sacramento. You're always welcome to our Board of Governors meetings. We meet every other month, and we'll have one on Monday. But as well, we also approve significant grants and look to individual districts to carry on some of the most important initiatives that are funded through both the state of California and the federal government. And I look forward to seeing a lot of grant applications and opportunities to partner with Pasadena Area Community College District, especially in the wake of what I'm looking forward to with the workforce task force recommendation to really revolutionize and have PCC as an active partner. We're delighted to have a new president, superintendent, and begin a new era at Pasadena City College. And before I close, I just wanted to also offer a personal word of appreciation to Bob Miller, who was an exceptional administrator that I worked with closely when I was a member of the Board of Trustees. And his stewardship over the district over this past year has really set a fantastic foundation on which to build going forward. And I know you'll be embarking on a strategic planning process with facilities and others. And congratulations on the selection of our new president. And I look forward to working with both the Board of Trustees, the president, and the rest of the administration as we continue at advanced community colleges for the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming and greeting our new superintendent president and keeping PCC in mind. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. And I always say, each president, I want each president to be a 10-year president for Pasadena City College. So I hope you're ready to commit the next decade of your life to advancing this institution and leading this institution.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, at this time, I also have an introduction and recognition. I would like to ask Dr. Miller to meet me over at the podium. Come on, let's go. On behalf of the board, I would like to take this opportunity, first of all, personally to thank you. Okay? We have a special recommendation for you, and I must read it because it probably will come out a lot better. So we have Dr. Robert B. Miller. Whereas Dr. Miller has been a champion, a true champion of Pasadena City College, and has dedicated himself to transforming our institution. And whereas Dr. Miller has provided consistent leadership to Pasadena City College and promoted its mission and values. And whereas Dr. Miller assumed the role of interim superintendent president during 2014 to 2015, and whereas Dr. Miller led Pasadena City College through its challenges, and I repeat, challenges, to a place where the college is posed to continue its legacy of academic excellence, integrity, and service to the community. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Pasadena Area Community District hereby acknowledge exceptional leadership and work of Dr. Miller.
Thank you very, very much.
Those words were really heart from the heart. Do you have anything you'd like to say, from Dr. Miller?
No one knows me as a man of few words, so... But I have to tell you, I am honored, I'm humbled. It has been an extraordinary year. I want to thank President Brown, the rest of the board, for the opportunity that was extended to me. PCC is an incredible institution. I do believe you've chosen an incredible new superintendent president. It's been truly a pleasure to work with Dr. Verdi in these past, what, 10 days? But I believe that we are starting a new era. We have an incredible faculty, an incredible staff, incredible management team here at PCC. We have challenges ahead of us, but I think we are poised and certainly in a better position now under Dr. Verdi's leadership and certainly after the last year. So I go back to my other position proudly, happily, and pledge my support to the institution and to Dr. Verdi, and certainly to our board. So thank you all very, very much.
Isn't he required to put on the new?
And wear it all night?
At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back. And just give him some love, Kazak. 15 minutes of loving. [laughter] At this time, what we would like to do is take a short recess so we could talk to Dr. Miller. If you have your camera, take some pictures with him. I was hoping that was going to be here. We have delicious cake in the back.[1523.12]
So I think that this instructor has committed fraud and bad faith, as what the accreditation team stated back when they came to visit, that the college does have a problem with ethics, that this practice is unethical. This is not student success. I still don't have my test accommodations, which is also a violation of the Disabilities Act for people with disabilities. Just so everyone knows, this is still an ongoing issue here at this college.
I'm sorry, you have only one more minute.
And I hope that the President's Office can find the paperwork that I need to file for a petition to the Board of Trustees in a timely manner. I only have 21 days left to do so. So I want to thank you for letting me share all this, and I sure hope that all of you do know how to get in touch with me, either by email or phone. And I want to thank you very much, because I have to return back to my class. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for providing us the information. Now we will move to the approval of the minutes of June 13 and June 17. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by trustee Wa. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Mann. Advisor vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, now we go to approval of consent items. Do we have anyone wishing to pull any of the consent items? We do have some revisions. I think it's Consent 11B has been revised, and Consent 5P as well has been revised. Any other changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by trustee Wa. A second by whom?
Trustee Fellow.
Trustee Fellow. Advisor vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we now have, turn to action items for the approval of signatures. Motion, I think you all have had the opportunity of looking at the signatures, and I will entertain a motion to approve the signatures. Move by trustee Thompson and second by trustee Wa. Advisor vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now we'll turn to Resolution 542 in support of the Americas College Promise Act of 2005. Okay, let's start with a motion. Do we have a motion?
I have approval.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Mann. Do we have a second? Do we have all?
I second.
Okay, we have a second by trustee Wa. Okay, discussion. Any discussion? Trustee Savage.
Right. I'd like to get some more information on how this act would specifically have an impact on the Pasadena Area Community College District in the state of California. I didn't get any information in the board package other than the resolution text itself. I remember when this sort of general idea was mentioned, I think, by the President and Department of Education some months ago. And the way in which the assistance would be provided to the students, to me, appeared to be structured in a way that would be very unfair and disadvantageous to, well, PCC and also community colleges in California in general. The mechanism that I understand that would provide the assistance to the college, community college students, would be for 75% of the tuition to be paid through the federal government through their program, and 25% would need to be provided in the form of relief from the college. But when you look at the different ways in which community colleges are financed throughout the country, and the level of tuition that is charged by different community colleges, if you kind of run the math, the vast majority of the assistance that would be provided to community college students would go to community college students outside of California, very disproportionately per student. I've taken a look over the years a couple of times at the tuition that we charge here at PCC, $46 a unit right now. And just if we concentrate on in-state students, it's $46. For outside of California, it's almost 200% higher than that. And so if you run the math, you can make a case that the taxpayers of California, if the law goes through as it's set up right now, the taxpayers of California would be sending a dollar to Washington, D.C., and students in California would be getting back maybe 40 cents of that dollar. The other 60 cents on the dollar would in effect be subsidizing community colleges in states and districts where they relied much less on general fund revenue, which we provide here in California, and much more on charging their students high tuition. So it's as if a state like California, which has this extraordinary commitment to provide access to community colleges by having a very large amount of general fund financing and small tuition, ends up subsidizing the states and the community college districts outside of California that haven't made that commitment. So I would urge us to take a hard look and see if somebody can explain to us if my analysis is incorrect, and how we could perhaps approach our Congresswoman Judy Chu or, you know, my Congressman Adam Schiff over here on the west side of Pasadena to perhaps give us an answer or talk to their colleagues who are outside of California about how we could get some fairness on the way in which the total amount of assistance would be provided.
Okay, we'll head trustee Mann.
Well, this would provide compensation for non-tuition expenses. So it provides support for housing, which in California is disproportionately high, and it would not limit Pell Grants and other income-based support just to tuition. So I don't know if anyone has ever run the numbers on what that would mean, but I think that puts a completely different light on what you're saying. It is true that the taxpayers in the state of California have been very generous with students compared to other states, but the cost of attending, the total cost of attending community college in California is so high because of the high cost of housing that it raises those costs up. And so maybe we could ask for the Financial Aid Office for some information on this, but this is not just tuition.
Trustee Fellow?
Yes, thank you. I certainly support this in concept and have always been one that the United States should be subsidizing its best students so they don't have to work. But I did approach Senator Luth some months ago when this became an issue. And she looked at me, she says, "Well, Tony, who's going to pay for all this?" And so I'm interested, I want to know more about this bill, where the funding will come from. And secondly, I was happy to see that there are some stringent guidelines, and I'd like to know what they are. So I'm very much supporting the concept of this, but I really would like to know more about, because this is very new to me, that this is going through Congress.
Any other comments? Yes, trustee Thompson.
Jeanette, I certainly am not that knowledgeable about the Americas College Promise Act of 2015 either, but whereas the bottom of the first page refers to creating a federal-state partnership grant awarded to states agreed to waive community college resident tuition and fees for eligible students. So I'm a little bit unclear in light of that as to your comment about the money would go for
Well, look at the next whereas.
Yeah, okay.
That low-income students would be able to apply Pell Grants to their non-tuition expenses. They would waive fees, and then the support would go to things like housing.
Well, but would the money go to the students? Or would it go to the college, or to the state, or to whom?
Pell Grants and other non-income-based support goes to the students, not to the college.
Okay, so the college has to agree to waive the tuition, then the student gets the money on top of that?
That's what it looks like.
Okay, I'm asking.
I don't know. I mean, this is a brand-new bill. Maybe we didn't, we were asked, we received this and said there was some urgency on it was the reason we brought it directly to the board. But maybe we should have spent a little more time looking at it.
I would like to know more about it, too, get more background information about it. And has it actually been introduced in Congress?
Yes, it has been introduced.
Yeah, both House and Senate, same bill.
The same bill, both the House and the Senate, right.
Yeah, it went in last week. You know, these things are going to get morphed, and, you know, there could be material changes, but it sounded like we were kind of getting ahead of it here by, you know, saying that we supported it at this point.
Yeah, so I also had some questions. So I agree with trustee Fellow that in concept, I also am supportive of this. I think we'd all like to see education be as accessible as possible to all of our students. And I do agree that California has been particularly generous. I think we're like one of, probably less than six states now. I think five years ago, we were one of six states that subsidized community college education. But I also think that the fiscal implications and the financial structures have not been worked out. And I think that does cause me also to be concerned. But I also think that where trustee Mann has put forth this resolution, it is really just to ask for support and to write letters to our legislators to say that we would support going forward. We already know that the economic, the financial structure will change quite a bit. There's still quite a lot of discussion going on in Washington. And at the time when I forwarded my questions to Dr. Verdi, I also received calls back from LA Community College District, who is up in Washington advocating for this. And they also have the same concerns. They know that the financial structure is not there, but they wanted to put forth, they wanted to advocate, to support that we support education and we support accessibility to education for all of our students.
Dr. Verdi?
I have asked Dr. Ryan Corner, who is Director of Planning, to do research on this item, and he's prepared to give us some explanation as to what this bill will do and how it will be funded. Dr. Corner.
So I want to thank the trustees, because you had the same questions I did when I originally started looking through the bill. In fact, when I first heard about the concept, given that our tuition is the lowest in the nation, and the next one up is about twice the amount that we charge here in California, it was the same concern that Dr. Salvage had. But that's not quite the way that the bill works. The way the bill works is if you agree to waive the tuition, you actually get money from the federal government to the state system to help fund community colleges, and it's based on the average tuition and fees of the nation. So essentially, what we would get is $3,800 per eligible student into the state. There's also a maintenance-of-effort clause, so the state could not then use the federal money and reduce their state allocation to the community colleges. So this would be fresh and new money into the system. Now, as far as how they would pay this at the federal level, that's left to be determined. What they're asking for is an initial $1.365 billion for the first year, and to scale that up to $14.17 billion by 2025.
Per year?
The first year, it would be $1.365, and then there would be escalators every year thereafter, stabilizing in 2022 at $14.17 billion for a price tag for this particular bill. Eligible students would be incoming students regardless of age as long as they are a first-time college student. And that's why there needs to be more money in future years, because you start getting funding for those students the first year, and then as they carry over, you start to get more funding. They have a pro-rata formula, so if there's not enough money to cover all eligible students, they would simply reduce the amount of money per student so that it was fairly spread across the nation. They don't have any facts or figures for how many students they think would be eligible or whether or not the $3,800 would meet all these goals. In addition, there's two other requirements. There's a requirement that the colleges themselves work towards increased student outcomes through evidence-based programming, and that's one of the things we commit to when we accept the money. And there's a commitment that the students maintain half-time or more to be eligible and have the same academic requirements they would to receive financial aid. Now, to Dr. Mann's point, the way that it would work is because these students no longer have to pay fees or tuition, they would then be able to apply their traditional financial aid to other qualified expenses. Qualified expenses include books, computers, or housing. Still not as a beneficial model here as it might be in other states where students are seeing significant tuition remission, but it would save students about $1,200 a year.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Any questions for him? Thank you.
Could we get some sort of an explanation for the next board meeting of, you know, how this works? You've given it to us verbally, and I'm trying to track it and, you know, in my mind, keep track of, you know, what the benefit is here at PCC and how many of our students benefit. These would be students that are making good progress and they're half-time or more. But, you know, you've described a whole bunch of moving parts. And, you know, if we can pass a resolution here that, you know, recognizes that, you know, these are the things that we like and that we endorse and we hope will stay in the bill, I'd feel a lot more comfortable.
Well, is there any urgency in passing this this evening? Or can we get this information and revisit this on our next board meeting?
You know, we were told that there is urgency. Trustee Wa mentioned that LA Community Colleges and Washington lobbying for it. So I would hope that we could pass it tonight. And I think Dr. Corner's report was very, you know, thorough, and I'm ready to vote on it tonight, but the board isn't, we can always wait.
Well, I would prefer to have that information in a report that we can take a look at and consider and be a little bit rather than just be giving it to us orally and have to act on it this evening. So if there's no criticality in doing it, we can delay it two weeks' time or until August 1 or August 5, I guess, is the next board meeting.
Trustee Wa.
So with respect to Dr. Mann, I appreciate this resolution being brought before the board. I do think that we might have a little time. I don't think we're exactly on the fast track. And I guess, Dr. Corner and Dr. Verdi, you can maybe comment to that. But I do think we might have a little time.
I'm not sure. I'll default to what Dr. Mann has heard. There will be obviously different stages that this bill will go through. I think they were looking for initial support to get some momentum going. But I will default to what the board and Dr. Verdi have to say and bring back whatever the board needs.
I think one of these strategies was they wanted to generate a lot of support before the congressional recess, which is coming up relatively soon. I mean, I can't imagine this bill's going to go through before the congressional recess. But I think that was, I think that if they saw support throughout the country coming forward, it might give it a boost. So I would prefer we vote tonight, but if the rest of the board wants to wait to see it, that's, you know, that's fine.
So may I ask, who is pushing for us to vote, the criticality of this?
Well, the first one we got was from the ACCT, the Trustees Association. The Trustees Association is very concerned that we create a momentum. And California is particularly important because, as trustee Salvage just said, it's well-known we have low tuition. So if we could come through with support, then that would, you know, would kind of bring people's attention. But I don't think anything, and I don't know when we have the recess. Do you know when the recess starts?
I would have to look up the exact dates, but it is coming up relatively soon.
I think it starts on August, or it's about a couple of weeks.
Nearly the month of August, I think.
Yeah.
So let's take a vote and see where we go.
So this is whether or not to vote for it tonight?
Yes. Do you want to approve this resolution today?
Aye, yes.
Aye. All in favor? One, two, three. Is it three? Raise your hand if you're in favor.
President Brown, I think you'll need to poll the board. I think you'll need to do a poll vote here.
Well, it's only three. Trustee Martin, are you in favor?
No.
Okay. Just the...
Did you forget my name?
I did, it's been so long. Trustee Fellow?
I think she was trying to announce it.
I'm in favor of the concept, I'll support.
Support. Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Trustee Wa?
No.
Trustee Brown, yes. Trustee Thompson?
No.
Trustee Salvage?
No.
Okay, so motion dies. So we will have to bring it back.
Okay, but that was not to approve it tonight, but we will bring it back next meeting with more information. So it's not dead in the sense that we don't support it. Yes, right. I just want to make sure that's clear in the minutes.
Okay, so we will hope that next meeting, we will have more information and bring back this resolution. Thank you.
Can I ask one really simplistic question? I just assumed every whereas talks about community colleges. The President of the United States talked about community college. The bill does specifically limit this to community colleges, is the question?
Yes.
I think so, but that's a really good question, yes.
Yes, but there is a provision for some grants that minority-serving four-year institutions could apply for to assist students in transitioning from community college to four-year institutions.
Okay, so we will now move to information item H, Superintendent President Report.
Well, Madam President, trustees, and members of the audience, it gives me great pleasure to be here tonight for my first board meeting as the Superintendent President of the Pasadena Area Community College District. But before I give you my report, I would like to introduce the newly-elected leadership teams of the Academic Senate and the Management Association. For the Academic Senate, we have Valerie Foster, Dr. Foster, biology professor, who is the new president of the Senate. And her team consists of Sheila Rose, languages professor, who is the vice president, Stephanie Fleming, speech professor, the secretary, and J. Cho, mathematics instructor, treasurer. And for the Management Association, we have Joe Futner, Associate Dean, who is the new president, Julie Moje, the HR supervisor, who is vice president, Tunisia Bailey, Office of Campus Youth supervisor, who is the new treasurer, Dicky Dixon from EOPS Care and Foster Youth as the Events Coordinator, and Paul Jarrell, the Dean of Instructional Support as the secretary. Well, I want to start this report by providing you with a wonderful piece of news. Late yesterday, we were informed that the Program for Academic Support Service, commonly known as PAS, has been renewed for the next five years. This means an additional income of roughly $1.5 million over that time period. And I think a great thank you to Maggie Rivera, Nancy Roberts, and Cynthia Olivo and their staff for making this happen. Well, today's my 10th day at Pasadena City College, and these 10 days have been nothing but amazing. Everybody has been most welcoming, and I want to seize this moment to thank everyone for making me feel at home. Well, at the college level, I've had the opportunity through the meet and greet on my first day to be introduced to about 300 college staff and community people. I promised all of them that by the end of August, I will know their names. Well, I don't know whether I'll be able to keep that promise, but I also met with the leadership team, the management team, the Senate, the Classified Senate, the Academic Senate, Faculty Association, CSCA, CFT. And this morning, I met with the Police Officers Association. My goal is to meet with all the groups within the next several weeks. I also toured the C- I also toured the CEC Center, Rosemead, and I will be going to John Muir together with Dr. Corner in the next three weeks. My very first order of business in getting to Pasadena City College was to meet with the senior leadership team to address the letter we received from the Accrediting Commission. I want to reassure the board and the community at large that we, as a college, are working on addressing the recommendations. We have already had meetings. We have set up the Steering Committee. We are putting together the work groups that will address the recommendations. This very afternoon, the team was meeting under the leadership of our Accreditation Liaison Officer, Dr. Kathy Scott. We are confident that we can successfully remediate the deficiencies. And Professor Stephanie Flemings is working very hard representing faculty and the Senate to help us get through this. I also met with the Superintendents of the Temple City and the Pasadena Unified School Districts to see how we can work to provide better service to our students and to create a seamless transition from the K-12 to the community college and here to Pasadena City College. And Dean Solomon Davila, who is in the audience with us right now, is meeting with the Temple City School District officials tomorrow to figure out what class we will be offering in the spring semester at the Temple City High School. And I think it is important that we provide this kind of service to our schools. In my meeting with Dr. McDonald tonight, this afternoon, we discussed the John Muir Project, and we had present the Principal of John Muir, and we do sincerely believe that in the very near future, we can sign a memorandum of understanding, and we are confident that classes can be planned for the spring semester at John Muir. I've also been very active in the community, and thanks to the invitation of Trustee Thompson, I visited McKinley Summer School Programs funded by the Pasadena Educational Foundation. It was an opportunity to meet the Foundation Officers and the school officials. I also had two working meetings with the city managers of Arcadia, Mr. Dominique Lazaretto, and South Pasadena Manager, Mr. Sergio Gonzalez. We discussed how the college can partner with the cities to enhance the economic and workforce development of the area. And I will be meeting with the managers of the other cities very soon. I attended the board meetings of the Pasadena Collaborate Leadership Council and the Pasadena Bioscience Foundation, and those meetings provide opportunities for the college to strengthen the bonds that the college has with the community. It is in our best interest to ensure that we are active in the area and that we contribute to the economy of the region. Earlier this week, I was interviewed by the Cino Vision, a television station which broadcasts in Chinese, about the University of California pathways. And on Monday afternoon, Trustee Wong and myself were interviewed by Mr. Charles Ding, a reporter from China Daily News, about the same topic. I would also like to inform everybody present and the board that we will be hosting two working lunches in the fall semester, and we hope to be able to continue that every semester. And those lunches will, the first one will be for the school superintendents and high school principals. We want to be able to communicate and to relate to them and to understand how Pasadena City College and the school districts can work together, because we need to be able to bridge that gap that exists between K-12 and community colleges and reduce the number of students that need to take pre-college classes before they can enroll into college classes. The second one will be for business leaders. It is important that we, as an institution, enhance the economic development of the area, and this can only be possible if we work very closely with the businesses that are in this area. And I'm looking forward to that, and we will be inviting you and letting you know when those meetings and lunches will take place. This Saturday, a Pasadena City College team, including myself and the Board President, will be accepting an award from the Pasadena Heritage and Historical Society. And next Monday at 2:00 PM, I will be hosting my first forum for the college community as well as the general public. You're all welcome to join us if you're available. And this concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Very good report. So now we will turn to the announcements by sheer governance representatives and board, and we will begin with Academic Senate, Dr. Foster.
Announcements.
That's right, you're brand-new, no announcements. Okay. About the Management Association, Joe Fortner?
Yeah, thank you, President Brown, and thank you, Dr. Verdin, as well. As Dr. Verdin alluded, we did have a meeting with him, with the Management Board, this past week, and it was conducted informally and very collegially. We discussed, of course, the accreditation report, and we talked about generally campus climate. In the words of the fictional character Rick, Rick Blaine, "I think this is the beginning of a very important friendship." So, thank you.
Is that your report?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we now go to Classified Senate, Ms. Grace Cavendishella.
Good evening, trustees. On behalf of the Classified Senate, I'd like to report that we recently had our first meeting last week on Wednesday with all of the senators, and so we met together and we discussed what the Classified Senate has planned ahead for the upcoming next school year. In addition, we also have a retreat for the Classified Senate. Once we vote at our next Senate meeting, which will be held next week on Wednesday, we will identify who will be, all of, what the role of all of the senators will be, including our new President, Vice President, our committee. In addition, when we meet for our, after we're done voting, when we meet on August 21st, we are going to have our retreat at the Huntington Library, and then we will be able to discuss in further detail what our roles are as our new, in our new position, in addition to the goals that we have to achieve for this next coming year. In addition, we did meet with the President as well, Dr. Verdin. We enjoyed meeting with you, and on behalf of the Classified Senate, we just want to welcome you again to the college, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Next is our Associated Student, Arvin Morales.
Good evening, how are you guys? First of all, I want to let you guys know that I'm completing my board, so we have one additional board member, which is the VP of Sustainability, Mr. Stefan DeDering. I'll be interviewing more applicants tomorrow, Friday, and next week, so hopefully we get our board bigger sooner, the sooner the better. Also, my board and I are walk, are working very hard for the shirts and volunteers and planners to have them ready for Welcome Day. We have already designed for our volunteer shirts, so hopefully we get lots of students out there to welcome our new students and parents that will be coming for Welcome Day. In addition to that, we are also working very hard with my advisors to get those planners done as soon as possible, because Associated Students will be working on those fully and making sure we have all the information needed for our students in those planners. Also, as you guys can see, we are hopefully having our retreat very soon, where we'll be all working together as a team. And so far, my board is very great, and hopefully I could bring them one day as soon as possible so you guys can meet them. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Student trustee?
No report.
No report? Trustee Salvage?
No report.
Trustee Thompson?
Well, I wanted to pick up on a comment by Dr. Verdin about the McKinley School tour yesterday morning. He and I, along with Cynthia, Cynthia Olivo and Bobby Abram, were there, and a number of other people also. And it was absolutely amazing to see what these children were doing, and they're talking about children who are five years old up to about 12 or 13 or 14 years of age, and it's absolutely amazing. They're working with robots and doing a whole bunch of things. In fact, Bobby Abram sent me an email later, not only thanking me about it and saying how amazed she was, she conceded that she was somewhat intimidated by seeing what these young people were able to accomplish. It's just absolutely amazing, so I'm sure if you talk to any of the three of them afterwards, they'll tell you more about it. The other thing I want to do is just to, I know that you people realize that I was in London last week and all that, and I know you're thinking, well, I went out to Wimbledon and was just goofing off and all that, but I did.
Were you not?
What's that? Well, I did have a very important thing to do. I met some very famous people when I was there, and I wanted to just hand out a picture to each of you to let you see the famous people.
Yep, I know this guy.
I was hoping for the Queen.
Second guy.
Oh, that's neat.
Is that your report?
That's really nice.
That's very nice, beautiful. I would cherish this. I will.
I would add that if you get a chance to go to Wimbledon, go. It is fantastic, just absolutely amazing. Great tennis, but just so well-done and just a real joy to be there.
Great. Justy Wong.
So many of you have received, hopefully you've received the, the link to the draft, the report for the Workforce Task Force. As President of the Board of Governors, Jeff Baum mentioned, we expect this to be a very transformative way of us to deliver education in the future, so I hope you all have a chance to read it. The timeline to submit comments was supposed to be today, but we, I think the task force received so many comments that they needed to simplify it to make it easier to read, so they went back, they redid the draft, and so the timeline has now been extended to July 20th. So it's important in that, one of the things that they're talking about is regionalization, and Tim Rainey, who was one of the co-chairs on the State Task Force, has already given notice to all of the WIBs that they will be regionalizing. And in conjunction with that, we expect these regional partnerships with the community colleges to also be forming. So please take a chance to read that and give any comments back. I also wanted to give a shout-out to Joanne Masuda. I noticed that we got a, we had a flyer here, and Joanne has been a very strong advocate for raising funds for the PCC, PTSA, and I guess you're having a fundraiser on July 29th at the Panda Inn Express, so we should all support that.
Okay, trustee Mann.
I have nothing to report.
Trustee Fellow.
I have a few things, and most of you have been through this, but I've been away. I haven't been to Wimbledon, I had to go to Europe to work.
So you say.
I have no pictures for you. I do have to say, this was, this happened in Maine, you've talked about it, but I was so impressed with the Foundation Scholarship Dinner, and Bobby Abram, is she here?
Right there.
Yeah, she is.
I think, I've been in politics a long time in the St. Gabriel Valley, and I thought this was the greatest event I've ever attended, and I congratulate you, and I was so proud of PCC and all the accolades that you deserve. And I was just really touched by it, and it was really the finest event I've ever been to, and I appreciate all the efforts that you and the Foundation put into that. I do also want to, didn't get a chance to say goodbye to some of the retired folks, and particularly Gloria Visser, who's served 41 years here at PCC, and Joseph Serra for 38 years, and I wish them well in their retirement. And finally, those of us who live in Arcadia received today, and maybe some of you did too, a magazine from Methodist Hospital, and on the front was our President, Lisa Sugimoto, and her contributions to the St. Gabriel Valley, and, and deals with her culture, her family history, and how she has dedicated her life to serving others, and I thought that was very nice. But it's good to be back for a while, but I do have to leave you again in September. The university wants me back in Europe, so I will be coming back and forth. I have to do it. Thank you.
Okay, how about trustee Martin?
No report.
No report, very good.
I'm sorry, I misinterpreted what this section was. I thought it was just announcements and not a report, and I do have a report, if you'd allow me just to speak a moment.
Please report it, go ahead.
Okay, so I just want to say that my team and I are very honored to be serving PCC in this capacity, and we look forward to working with students and classified and managers and the board this year to move the college ahead in a very collegial way. We're starting to already talk about Flex Day with classified students and managers. We're developing a theme, which is going to be growth mindset, which is applicable to everyone on the planet. And we, basically, we're going to return the day to include all campus constituents. For a long time, it's just been faculty, but in a spirit of collaboration, we're going to have managers, classified, and students participate this year, so we're really excited about that.
Great, thank you for sharing that. Trustee Salvage, you had a piece of information you forgot to share?
Oh, yes. I was over on Lincoln Avenue a couple of days ago, and going north and then going south, I go past John Muir High School, you know, go Mustangs, and they've got electronic sign out front, and they've got names of students who graduated, and underneath that, they have the, these are students that are going on to college, and, you know, you kept seeing, you know, John Doe and PCC, and then Mary Smith, you know, PCC.
Nice.
So we got a lot of, a lot of students from John Muir High School coming here to PCC after graduating this June.
I would never want to miss that information, thank you.
They're advertising, they're advertising for us. Everybody knows that we're the place to go.
We are now going to turn to, let's see what we're turning to. Yeah, our future board business dates, meeting dates. Okay, so we have Wednesday, August 5th, and Wednesday, August 19th, will be our future board meeting. We do need today to set the meeting for our retreat. I know Mary's probably tired of us all, Mary. Okay, let's go back. I think the meeting that was, we had a date, which was set for September 12, and I think there was a conflict. Do you still have that conflict? Trustee Thompson? Trustee Thompson?
Yes, I do.
So that's a conflict that you cannot change, right?
Right.
Okay, okay, so September 12 is off. Mary sent out all the Saturdays of September, and there was always a problem. So we have not been able to get all trustees. We know that trustee, why can't I remember your name? I guess you've gone too long. Trustee Fellow will not be here, but we need to have the six trustees present. So no Saturday. In September, we were able to have. Okay. Then we tried for the Wednesdays. Same thing. So what I would like to ask you tonight is, from Wednesday, August, from, let's look at the week, the week of August. Do you have a, where's your stuff? Thank you. Let's see if we can do this. Okay, so if you have your calendar, please take a look at the last week of August and tell me if there is a day, there is a day where you can meet. Is it Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Wednesday?
I've gone the entire last week of August, I'll be in Canada.
Okay, there we go, August is out. Okay, let's go September.
What about substituting one of our board meetings?
Yeah, how about August 19th, instead of a board meeting? Do we need two business meetings in August? Usually it's a slow time, can we turn one of those into a retreat?
You are such of a genius. That's a toss, that's a big toss.
Is there anything, is there anything that we need to do with the budget on August 19th? Or is there, there's no September 1st deadlines, is that correct?
We, let's see, August 19th was the date that we were planning on bringing the budget to the board.
But could we do that in September?
Yeah, we can do it the first week in September, the first meeting in September.
Okay.
What's the date in September by which we have to approve the final?
I believe it's September 15th.
Okay, so it looks like we're making progress here. So, Dr. Verdin, would that be okay with you?
No, yeah.
Okay, so I'm sure we all will be here for September 19, right?
August 19.
I mean, August 19, except for Tony, Tony, are you?
No, I'm here.
We're all here.
You're here? You're kidding me? Perfect.
So what time?
Wow, that's good, this is good. Okay, so should we do it at 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock, or the regular? I know that, John, would it have been convenient for you to come in earlier? Like 5 or 4 or whatever?
Yes, I mean, I can do that if it works for everybody else, I'll arrange it.
So let's say, can we all be here at 4 o'clock?
Yes.
Wow, perfecto. Okay, our retreat will be. Okay, our retreat will be August 19th at 4:00.
Well, six hours it takes us to 10.
So we bring our pajamas or?
Bring your pajamas.
I don't go to bed at 10:00.
No, because, whatever.
Okay.
So we'll be out, okay? Perfect, all right, so we are in business. Wow, you guys should have emailed me and told me that. Okay, great, so now we already have our retreat set for August 19th. And do we have any future agenda items that we would like to put down? No?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I will leave this to Dr. Verdin for the timing, but I would like for, at some point, to have a, a report to the board and to the public on what, how we plan to address the, the recommend, well, what we need to do to address the accreditation situation. I think, I think we will have a plan, but I think it'd be good if we shared it. So I don't know when, but I think if we, I would like to have it at some point. And the sooner, as soon as we have something complete, if I'd love to think what happened.
We will have this done for you.
Okay, good.
So, that being said, this meeting is now adjourned.